This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, 6:04, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. First order of business is the informational meeting. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Lynn.
Okay, so we're gonna have Courtney share some slides. So we'll start this meeting, and this will be strictly focused on the budget informational meeting, and then we'll transition to our regular board meeting. So Morgan and I will go back and forth on this slide. Say that again?
Sound problem in Zoom.
Are we good with sound?
I think so.
Okay, so we'll restart. We're going to begin with our public informational meeting around version three of the ERUUSD budget. So Morgan and I will go back and forth with some information, and then we will open it up for questions or comments. So come on in and join us. So Courtney, if you could start sharing the slides. So we'll give a little historical information first. So where we are right now, if you could go to the next slide for us. In terms of school budgets in Vermont, at this point, all but nine budgets in the state have been approved. So we still have nine that are out there waiting to be voted on. I think there are two or three that are being voted on today in the state. There are several that are being voted on next Tuesday. There's one tomorrow. We might be the last one on June 25th. So that's where we're at. Almost 93% of the budgets have been approved at this point. Here is a little historical data. So you could see the lighter blue reflects the number of yes votes on the budgets. The darker blue represents the number of no votes. You could see vote one on the left, vote two on the right. So we saw a few less yes votes the last time, and many fewer no votes the last time. We had lower voter turnout than we did previously, and we do suspect it was going to be difficult to get people to turn out for this vote. So we'll talk about ways in which people can vote a little later. So you could see this number just reflects the number of people that voted in each of our communities each time.
We've talked about student enrollment before at these meetings, so this is probably not new to folks. These are showing the trends that we're anticipating for the next five years. And you'll see in both high schools, we're anticipating a rise in the number of kids, and then it muddling off. And then conversely, to elementary schools, relatively steady movement, but a decline in the next couple of years before it really flattens out. We will not go into this in the same level of depth that we've gone into ed spending in the past, but basically to set a tax rate, the state will take the budget that is approved by the voters, divide it by that weighted student count, which we've talked about quite a bit, and then divide that by the yield, and that sets the tax rate for the district. The yield is a number that the legislature sets every year. The yield bill was vetoed by the governor last week, so we are still in a place where we don't know where that number is gonna end up. Probably by June 25th or six is when we think it'll be finally set.
So this visual is similar to the visual that we have shared in the past. What this represents is district spending across the state of Vermont. So each line represents a different district. What you see on the visual is that each red line represents per pupil spending. I'm sorry, I should have said this is based on this current year that we're in, so per pupil spending for this school year. The red lines represent our Franklin County partners or counterparts. There are two black lines near the middle. The top black line represents what the statewide average per pupil spending is. The line, the black line below that represents what the Franklin County average per pupil spending is. If you go down towards the bottom, you will see that the Ennisburg-Richford per pupil spending for this current year is 10,502, which is the 18th lowest in the state. And in the Northern Mountain Valley District, those are the, that's Bakersfield, Berkshire, Montgomery, and Sheldon. That's 9,970, which is the 12th lowest spending in the state. On this next slide, what we've really done is, it's the same visual that we just showed you, except we've blown it up, so you're only looking at the bottom 20 in the state. So again, on the left, that represents this year's per pupil spending, that weighted per pupil spending. So you can see NMV and Ennisburg-Richford are 12th and 18th respectively in the state. You can see on the right-hand side, that's projected for this next school year. So you can see those are the bottom 20 districts in the state. With this third version of the budget, that drops the Ennisburg-Richford per pupil spending down to number six, number six lowest in the state of Vermont. What this reflects is that there is only one other district that spends less per pupil than we do that actually operates schools. Four of the lines below where Ennisburg-Richford is for next year, those are systems that don't operate schools. They tuition their students out. So we're really the second lowest operating district in the state of Vermont. This is just a visual. It's essentially the same information. That picture on the left represents all of the different districts across the state of Vermont, and just as a reminder that we are the sixth lowest spending in the state in second lowest operating.
So we mentioned that the dollar yield has not been set yet, and in a normal year, when education spending declines anywhere in the state, the dollar yield can increase. And as the dollar yield increases, as that goes up, our education tax rate statewide will decline. And that operates conversely, as districts increase their spending, the dollar yield goes down and tax rates everywhere go up. We'll talk a little bit on the next slide about the tax rate floor. In Vermont, you can only have a district-level tax rate of a dollar. The state never lets it drift below that, and that's so that they can get money from districts that might not have any kids and any education spending in a year. But because it's a statewide system, they need to come up with a mechanism to ensure that every property taxpayer in Vermont, no matter where they live, contributes something. With the proposed budget that we have going to the voters next week, two weeks from now, we are projecting an anticipated tax rate of about a dollar two-five. So in this graph, you'll see the history of Ennisburg-Richford from our first year's emerged system. The tax rate was relatively flat for the first two years, and then it's been declining pretty precipitously here. If you look at that last black dot, you can see that just below it is that one-dollar tax line, and so that is the point that we are not allowed to fall below. So there will be a point where if we need to bring this budget back to the voters a fourth time, we could potentially cut to the point where we're cutting money but no longer reducing the tax rate. There's also, because the yield rate, the yield bill has been vetoed, we really don't know where that numbers can end up. If the governor and the legislature can agree on other non-property tax money going into the education fund, it's likely that the yield will come up and our tax rate may fall below that dollar-two that we're projecting, even if this budget passes.
So this is really just summarizing what Morgan said, that if we hit the tax rate floor, anything, anything that gets cut below that just really goes back into the ed fund. So we cut opportunities without having any sort of positive impact on our taxpayers. Because there's this instability with the yield bill, it is possible that we have already, even though we're right now at a dollar-two, it's possible that we've already cut so much that if there's an adjustment that goes into that bill, that we'll be below the floor.
And so that dollar-two-five tax rate is what we call the district tax rate, and that would be applied to both Ennisburg and Richford. The state then uses the CLA, or the Common Level of Appraisal, to adjust the rate for each individual town in a district. And the reason that they do that is that they know that the grand list in one town might be more valid or less valid than a grand list in the neighboring town. So a CLA of 80% would mean that a house that is on the grand list for $100,000 is actually worth $125,000 fair market value. A CLA above 100%, 110% in this example, means that that fair market value is actually below the $100,000 that it's appearing on the grand list. And so they're using that to make it fair between the taxpayers, so that they're paying taxes based on their fair market value rather than the listed value. And that's the reason why when we look at the next slide, you'll see that there are, there's one district tax rate, but when we apply the CLA, Ennisburg and Richford each have a different tax rate. We need to take a pause for the results.
Well, I think that we might have a team outside that just won their semifinal. Is what it sounds like out there.
This graph shows the history of those equalized home tax rates. So in black, you can see the district tax rate again, pretty steady for two years and then dropping. In Ennisburg, the green line, it was drifting up those first two years, and then it's been pretty level since then. And that is moving differently in the tax, district-wide tax rate again because of that difference in CLA. In Richford, the story's been a little bit different. It was tracking flat for four years, and then the town went through a reappraisal. And so the value of that grand list changed pretty dramatically, and they saw their tax rate decline precipitously between '23 and '24. And that was because their CLA went well over 100%, which drives the final rate down. That has moved back up, but you can see it is still below the district-level tax rate, and that's because their grand list is still valued richer than the fair market value of those houses. This will sort of show you the impact in terms of an actual taxpayer. So in both towns, again, the projected tax rate is a dollar-two fifty-three. The second line is what happens to that tax rate after the CLA is applied. So Ennisburg's rate is actually a dollar thirty-seven, Richford's is actually ninety-five cents. And based on the budgets that have passed and what we know about CLAs in the state, we think that Richford's tax rate with this budget will actually be second from the bottom statewide of the 250-something towns in the state. The next line shows the change from the previous year. Ennisburg's tax rate is actually dropping over last year, again, because their CLA is not moving as much as in other towns. Richford's tax rate, despite being below a dollar, has seen a pretty significant increase, and that's because their CLA has been moving so dramatically over the last year. You can see the line highlighted in yellow is the projected tax bill on a $100,000 home. So you have a $100,000 house in Ennisburg. We're anticipating it'll pay $1,372. Richford with that lower rate is paying significantly less for that $100,000 house. And then the last line just shows you the change in the tax bill, similar to the change in the tax rate above.
Morgan, one of the questions that I have heard come up before is that people don't understand who comes up with what the Common Level of Appraisal is. Could you say something about where that number comes from?
So that calculation is given to us by the tax department. And what they do is they look at the past few years of house sales on an individual town-by-town basis. And so they see that if in Ennisburg, let's say there are several homes that have been selling for $125,000, but they had been listed for $100,000, they're backing into the CLA that way. They know that those houses in that town have been of higher fair market value than what they're selling for. And conversely, on the Richford side, with that big increase in property values based on the reappraisal they had, they can look at those properties, but also look at the tax sales and say, okay, now that, that grand list is valued a little higher than it really should be.
Thank you. We can go quickly through this. Morgan mentioned that, that we're expecting Richford's tax rate to be the second lowest in the state, even though it does feel like an increase. Where they are, based on what the reappraisal was last year, still is comparatively pretty low. So some of the budget decisions that have been made since the town meeting day vote. So this board has reduced $918,146 from our spending plan, our first spending plan. When they went from version one to version two, the reductions were a sizable reduction that came out of the FNESU assessment that was related to the SU budget. They reduced a Spanish teacher, so part of the full-time equivalent for the Spanish teacher, part of a librarian position, a para educator, and there was a new outdoor education teacher that had been budgeted for Richford High School that was removed from the budget. In the third version, so from the last budget that people voted on until this budget, there was one part-time teacher that was reduced from this budget. There are four para educator positions. There are some reductions to the athletic budget, and as we talked about in the last meeting, that's not cutting any teams, but it was looking at money that we had added in to the athletic budgets around. We had added transportation, we had added additional money for resources for those teams, equipment purchases, things like that. I think also, so transportation and officials, Morgan, do you remember?
It was largely supplies and personnel.
Okay. We also have had two year-round athletic directors between these two communities, and we reduced the number of days that those athletic directors are working. We reduced one school clinician and one custodian from this budget. So that, all of that together is just under a million dollars.
So there will be two articles on the ballot when you go to vote. The first one is the budget article asking for authority to spend up to that spending plan, which we've discussed. We have an additional sentence on this ballot for board members, just so you know what's going on. In the yield bill, which was passed but not signed yet, they have changed the mandatory language around what you have to put on the ballot. Next year, it will include this comparison of ed spending per pupil. So we decided to put that in there. I, we don't know if the yield bill veto will be overridden or what will be in there for next year, but currently, we've got that language on this article. The second article is the one looking for authority to borrow. This is so that when we have to make payroll on July 5th, pay your custodians, pay your principals, pay anyone who's on a school-year contract, and do that before the state starts spending, sending us their aid in September, it gives us the ability to go to a bank and get money to make that payroll. This has not passed in Ennisburg. It's usually one that passes without any, any real controversy. Either way, if this passes or if this doesn't pass, we will be warning an emergency board meeting to get that note in place. In Vermont, if you don't have a past budget by July 1, there is some authority in statute to go out and borrow. If you do have a past budget, the bank is gonna look at your past budget to determine how much money you can spend. So either way, we'll probably have a meeting either first week, last week of June or first week of July.
Again, just to reiterate the misconceptions around that, this is not spending above what's budgeted. It's just spending that's needed until we get that first payment from the Agency of Education, from the state education fund. I think we can skip over that. So we thank, there are several people in the room. We thank you for being here for this. I know we have some people, I can't tell how many, but we do have some people who have joined us on Zoom. We have another opportunity a week from tonight at Richford Junior Senior High School for another informational meeting. All of these informational meetings will be posted on our website, so people can go there to re-watch these informational meetings. So we appreciate people being here for this. One thing we would like people to know is that you can actually vote on the school budget now. Everything is open. You can call your town clerk. You could request a mail-in ballot by calling your town clerk. You also can go vote now at your local town clerk's office, or you can go to the next slide. You can vote on Tuesday, June 25th. Those polls will be open in Ennisburg at the Public Safety Building from 10 until 7:00, and in Richford at the town clerk's office from 10 until 7:00. And also, if people are not registered to vote, they live in either Ennisburg or Richford, and they're not registered to vote, they can register to vote even up to the day of the election. Does anyone have any questions for us about the budget?
I got a few questions. So just going off of some things, I've been just chit-chatting with people in the community. Wanted to make sure we could bring some other stuff up. I was just wondering, one of the things I hear a lot about is, were there any positions created during COVID with COVID money that we are trying to continue on with at this moment?
So we have, you have to help me if I have to work out. We have some family engagement positions that, that we piloted during COVID, and the boards made the decision that those have become really valuable for engaging with families. Those are generally positions that help families with resources and help families whose kids are struggling, whether attendance or something like that. So there were a couple of those that were built into the budget.
I think for the Ennisburg-Richford budget, those are the ones, those two.
Right.
So four positions?
Two.
I think it's two.
Oh, two positions?
Yeah.
What's the value on those positions? Not like, like actual monetary value?
Not the monetary?
No, no, the actual monetary value.
Oh.
Probably around, benefits somewhere in the $60,000 to $80,000.
A piece?
A piece.
A piece. Also, what's the school clinician? That was a question I was unsure of.
The one that was cut?
Yeah.
So we have contracts, and principals can jump in if there's something you want to add to this. I don't think it's any secret to anybody that we have students who are struggling with mental health issues, and what might not be as visible is that there are less resources available for our students and for our families and for us to access from our local mental health providers. There are some resources that, that we have built into our own system, but there are also some contracts. The school-based clinician contract is something that we have in place in a lot of our buildings, and that has been a position that has been challenging to fill since the pandemic. So that it's really a clinician that comes in and works individually with kids who are really struggling. So that was actually a position that came out of Richford Elementary's budget. So do you want to add anything in terms of the therapeutic part of that position?
Yeah, sure. So like as Lynn said, we have, we do, we are seeing an increase in students who have some very significant mental health issues, and it presents in a way that makes it very difficult for them to access their education. There are not a lot of resources for children outside. There's not a lot of counseling resources. Even if they could, a lot of our families can't, don't have transportation, and even if they do, finding counseling for children is a real challenge in this area of the state. This is a position that I have tried to fill for some time, have not been able to fill. And so we've been trying to meet those needs in other ways in our building. It can be a real cost savings in the end, because it can mean that kids are attending. It can mean that kids are not, you know, being placed somewhere else if you have very significant, end up having really significant behaviors. Trying to meet those needs at the earliest, at the youngest age is just really helpful. But we also have not been able to.
So that's, we're cutting a position that's not filled right now?
It's a position that was not filled, but I've been trying to fill. Will definitely have been helpful.
Yep. The question we have on Zoom is, what is the amount of the entire athletic budget?
It is about, if you're not talking about gym classes, if you're only talking about sports teams, it's about $360,000. And the budget detail, which I believe we'll have that broken out, is now on our website if you want to pull the actual budget documents down.
Anybody else, any other questions? So just to speak on the athletics, I think Ennisburg and Richford both are very proud of their athletics and everything like that. I think that's, that's a point that we want to be careful that we're, you know, we may cut from something like that, but you may get a lot more no votes because of where it's coming from. I don't think anybody wants to see any athletics. I think that's a very important part of schools. And not that, you know, mental health is important too, but I think that might cause a little bit of stir.
Can I just speak to that? I think that we didn't, so I'm gonna back us up again. And I don't know who in the room was here for early conversations, but there was a law passed within the last few years called Act 127. And it was supposed to advantage systems like ours, who had been historically economically disadvantaged by the previous funding system. So they changed the weighted pupils this year pretty significantly. So how much money you receive for the, for categories of students that you serve. So our system, in theory, was supposed to be able to spend more money to create more opportunities for those students who had been previously economically disadvantaged. We built in added resources into that athletic budget. We pulled that back out in this cut. We didn't cut teams. So you're not gonna see a decrease from what you currently have, but the increased opportunities that we wanted to put there aren't there.
They're just on the shelf for now.
Anymore, right. Because of what's happened with these two budget defeats, which is really unfortunate because, you know, as I said in the beginning, we're one of nine systems in the state without an approved budget. We are the second lowest operating district in the state of Vermont, sixth lowest spending overall. This law was intended to advantage us, and it actually has disadvantaged us because we aren't able to get a budget passed. So we've now, we built in those opportunities for our students, because that's, that's what the law was intended to do. People that historically were advantaged, those systems were supposed to hold money, like reduce their spending, because this is a statewide system. So the intention was to spend less in the high-spending schools and more in the low-spending schools. So unfortunately for us, we've had to strip out many of the opportunities that we built into that budget. So we are hoping that our community members will understand that, because I hear what you're saying about people don't want to see opportunities go away for students. We don't want that either. But at the same time, we're trying to be responsive to what our community members are telling us by not supporting our budget. And, you know, this is round three of a budget, so that definitely wasn't anywhere near the top. Every decision from here forward hurts somewhere. And, you know, what we said about the, the yield bill, the, the thing that hurts my heart the most is that if that yield bill gets adjusted, because the governor has vetoed it, and that, that yield number goes up, we already could be landing below that floor. So we would have cut out opportunities, and we couldn't have saved you any more money. So as we're talking about, like, looking at this budget critically, we don't have, if the yield bill doesn't change, if that yield number doesn't change, we don't have a lot left that we could pull out that will impact your taxes. So we could vote it down, but we're not gonna cut below the dollar, because it, it just doesn't make any sense. You won't pay less than a dollar in your district tax rate. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yes.
Anybody else?
In this district, is there a criteria that dictates how many students or, well, what programs will be supported by numbers? well, we're in a different, what programs will be supported by numbers? In other words, if you have 1,000 kids and two of them are in basket reading, is that, is that, what's the criteria for programs and per student, et cetera, et cetera?
When you say programs, are you talking about extracurricular opportunities, like sports and clubs and things like that?
Any program, any curriculum?
So I don't think we have, we don't have a hard and fast procedure for the number of students, but certainly we would be looking at participation as we're bringing investments to the board. The principals, we work pretty hard to make sure that we're tight about, we're not offering something that we don't have anybody participating in or only a few students. We've been, over the last several years, trying to look more closely at student enrollments in each of the classes as well, not just the extracurriculars, but the classes, and merging those classes where we can't or not offering that class or offering it in a different way through online opportunities or other ways. So we're trying to be really critical about those things, but we don't have a written procedure that says if it falls below this number, we're going to cut that.
Well, let me ask it this way, are there any programs being supported that have three participants or four?
When you say, I don't know that I can answer that in terms of like if we have a class that has three or four. I mean, I suppose it's possible we could have an AP class or something, an advanced placement class. I'd have to do some digging to figure that out. I could get back to you on that if that's an important, that answer is important to you. I don't believe we're offering any sort of extracurricular club or sport or any other activity that has that few students principals want to add in. Can you think of any examples?
Nothing that we pay for.
Quantum physics perhaps, is there two students in quantum physics?
Can you think of any classes?
Yeah, I mean, this year we had a pretty small calculus class because our senior class is really kind of the smallest on record, but we have a lot more students enrolled in it next year. So this year, I think it's around three kids, and it's pretty unusual for us to go ahead with a class like that, but we wanted to sustain the program so we'd be able to offer it next year when I think we're going to have over a dozen kids taking it.
That's what I'm getting at, what is the criteria in the district as to what percentage is the district willing to support and not support?
So.
Maybe that's.
Yeah, we definitely have been looking at, the principals will can talk to you about this. We do a class size policy each year. We're required to take a look at that in October of each year. So at that board meeting, we look at what the recommended number of students, the minimum and the maximum for the number of students. One of the things that has been challenging, as Mr. Webb said, is when you're contending with really small classes in our two small high schools, there are times where some of those classes are really small. And we have, I've put the two principals together to say, can we think of a different way to do this? And those are things that they're trying to be good about is really looking at, is there a way that one of us could offer it and kids from the other school can take it in another way?
Efficiently.
Right, right.
Can I just add something?
Yeah.
I'm just sort of thinking about the, of course, Matthew, you would be able to speak to this more since you're talking about that particular class, but the teacher that's teaching that class would not be teaching just that class. The teacher would be also teaching other math classes or other content.
That'd be one of their periods.
Right, so other classes throughout the day.
That's right.
So there could be that one that has fewer in order to be able to sustain that for the students for next year when there's a bigger group. But certainly that teacher would not be hired for only that one class. They would have a full load of classes to teach him throughout the day. I think the other thing that is important, and again, Matthew, I think this is an important piece for you to speak to, is that we do attract some students to our schools. And there is also that balance between eliminating so many options that it's no longer desirable to have other students also come to us, right? I know the ROTC program is important in that fashion, there's probably other things also. And that's probably more specific to the high schools that are able to offer some additional options.
Yeah, Kelly makes a really good point. In order to, you know, one of the big sources of income for our district is students who live in, well, Sheldon for sure, but also Bakersfield, and of course Montgomery, Berkshire, those are the main ones at this point. And so particularly when you have students in Bakersfield or Sheldon who are looking at MVU or looking at BFA, that it's really important for us to be able to continue to attract them to our school. So if we cut too many things, if we cut advanced programs or if we cut programs for students who are struggling in a particular area, then we start to compare, when we have to compare with other schools. Sorry.
I never get cold. I can't shut it off.
It was called Murphy's Law. So, you know, so it's really important when we think about cutting or maybe what we shouldn't cut is that we need to be able to continue to draw students from different places, or we could end up in, you know, cuts now could mean we lose some kids who want particularly things they can't get here, and then we have, then we lose that money, and then we can't offer as much, and then we cut a little bit more. So we don't want to end up in a spiral to the bottom, which is why sometimes we have to offer things, we continue offering things when there isn't a huge numbers. However, I just gave you a really outlier example. I can't think of any examples of classes that small in my school, and so other examples. So we also try to balance that out with other assignments. So for example, the teacher who taught that class previously didn't have as many students, and so I reorganized the way her classes were arranged, or rather, the classes that she was teaching to make sure that she had a lot more students. So we're trying to preserve enough to continue to make our school attractive, and sometimes you get those exceptions. On the other hand, you know, we have a part-time Spanish teacher with more students than we can possibly fit. All of her classes are in the mid-20s because she's part-time, so we're getting as many students as we can in there. So it's a little tricky sometimes to even these things out.
Just encourage people to vote.
Yes, the best thing is maybe we'll scan, get out there and vote. We really need to get this passed. Any more cuts, it's going to be really deep. Principals are very stretched, very, very thin.
We do thank everyone for coming. We're going to transition into a regular board meeting. You're welcome to stay for that part if you like, but we'll move away from the budget conversation for now.
If you could just sign in, there's a sign-in sheet somewhere.
We're going to move right into the regular meeting. Okay, so for just minutes, so, okay, I'm wishing to leave if there's no discussion on those. We got two, we got May 14th. Rachel made the motion, all in favor? Okay, on policy, got a first read, we got a D or F5, district quality policy, F6 kindergarten registration, F33, FNSU, across the district, school choice. Okay, motion approved those, personal discussion.
Right to motion.
Sarah made motion, all in order, all in favor? Second read, we got FY security, cameras, F2, student conduct, D12, payment for work outside the contact, contract day, D13, and D4. Any discussion on those? Okay, retain motion. Who made the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then the last was informational procedures for student conduct and discipline. Any discussion on that one? And then D4 staff evaluation, that removed, any problems, discussion on that?
The reason we hold that policy is it's written in statute. We don't need it to be in policy.
And do we need to re-prioritize it any?
No. You probably should approve, though, removing staff evaluation.
Okay. Do you entertain motion approved by?
Made a motion.
Sarah made a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll go down to the school's panel later.
Okay, well, today, I am pleased to welcome Amy Jarvis and Chelsea Menz Cole. And they are a first grade team, and they have been doing an outstanding job taking a unit, they developed a farm unit, and including it in literacy, field trips, science. So they're going to share a little bit about what this looks like. Welcome.
So we are just going to share a little bit about what we did pretty much for the month of May. So we just created a unit for kids that integrated science with literacy and mostly literacy and global studies. But then we made a lot of connections with different farming experiences. The reason we did it is that we know that our students love science and hands-on activities. We live in a farming community, and we found out that only one out of 28 of our students actually live on a farm.
Virginia was, Holman from the Shelburne Farms Dairy in the Classroom Program shared with us that she's been doing this for 20 years, and it used to be always at least half. So in that time span, she's seen it go from at least half to just one.
And the two farm girls were really surprised by that. And then we also know that a lot of our students don't have opportunities for experiences that have to do with farming, like raising and caring for animals, planting and harvesting food, or even knowing where their food comes from. So we thought this was something important to show our students. So we started by applying to adopt the CAF program through the Discovery Dairy Initiative, and we partnered with Katie Hale from Jarvis Family Farm in Bakersfield, and this was our CAF ton that we adopted. And we were able to get updates from Katie about, and watch her grow. And there was lots of educational part to it. Katie would send messages about how they were fed and about the soil, that they were out in the field and like tons of things, so there was a lot of learning involved in that. Our classrooms were full of books and different resources for the kids to access. We also had 12 eggs in an incubator. We had six hatch, this was hatch day, they were thrilled. Most, I would say, most of them had never seen an available hatch from eggs, so they were amazed.
Myself included.
And then we cared for and enjoyed, we had six chicks for two weeks. We kept them in the classroom, so the kids had to take care of them, change their box and give them fresh food and water. And this was our chicken circle. So we sat in a big circle and with all the first graders, and we put the chicks in the middle. And that was, blew their minds. And then we had upturns for them just to hold and care for the chickens. I mean, we had the little boy in the corner did not want to touch that chicken, but we put on his shirt, so he was able to be brave that way and interact with the chickens. The other part of our experience was being part of the Dairy in the Classroom Program, which is their Shelburne Farms. And we were visited by Virginia Holloman, who's a retired teacher and farmer herself. And she focused her learning on cows and goats. So we made butter and cheese with the kids. We learned where food comes from and how important farmers are to our community and to the world. This was hazel making butter.
Lots of the students shared that they went home and told their parents about how to make butter, and they were making their own butter at home. They were very proud of that skill that they had learned.
And this is our students dressing up as a goat. And this is them actually making the cheese, being part of that process. It's just, I'm like, I am changing. And then we wrote about what we learned throughout the month. This is something that they wrote, that they learned about cows specifically. We also learned about plants, how they grow and what they need to survive and how important they are to the earth and to our nutrition. We had some greenhouses in the windows where we made, we grew bean seeds, and then you can see in the cups that they grew further. And then for fun, we grew grass as our hair, we did ourselves haircuts. And then we were able to see the roots grow and to really see how plants develop, so very fun. And then we did some, we did a field trip, we did three things in one day. So we went to the Jarvis Family Farm to meet Farmer Katie. Some of the things that they were able to experience that day.
We also got to go in the parlor and see the actual process of milking the cow. They were quite impressed.
And most had never even been that close to a cow before. We also visited Farmer George at Dozley Goat Farm in Bakersfield. Very different comparison to a really large-scale farm to a very small-scale farm.
Farmer George had working dogs that were trained to herd the sheep, and he allowed them to problem solve and go out into the field and try to see how they could herd, or the sheep, goats. See how they could herd the goats themselves, and they went out and they stood in a circle around the goats, and they all stared at each other. And, you know, they thought and problem solved a little bit with it. And then they stepped aside and let the dogs do what they do, and it was really amazing to watch.
And then we went to the sugar house, and we were able to see how, talked about how syrup was made, and we were able to see a bunch of sugar house, which was really cool, and had samples, of course. And that was our day. That was kind of our culminating event tomorrow.
It's so much, so much fun to see how you have been able to engage them not only with the learning about the farming, but like helping them to see what's right here in our community. And I think that those jobs are also important for us to expose our kids to within our community at a really young age. So I applaud you for pulling that into your culminating units to go experience that.
We also took the first grade to the Coolpalo and had a great experience in the automotive where they saw those types of jobs too. And so many of them, their minds were, you know, really engaged and just blown away by what Baxter and his students were doing. They were already saying they couldn't wait to get there themselves, so definitely.
Six-year-olds are like that.
Yeah, lifting the car.
Got fourth grader driving escalators last week. No, we didn't, just excited, that's all I did.
Thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you.
I'm going to back a little bit. We do have some visitors on Zoom, is there any public comment from them? Great, we'll move on to Morgan.
Okay, mine's going to be relatively quick. We do have the FY '23 audit draft. I've sent some changes back, and I expect to have the final version in the next couple of weeks. Once that comes in, I will share that with you, and we'll probably take action on it at the August meeting. There are no findings, clean audit, kudos to Fran and Sonia for that once again. In terms of this year FY '24 budget, we had billed out a lot of prior year revenue at the beginning of the year, so I think we're going to be ending this year in a very comfortable place. We're talking with the principals about trying to get a few building projects done in those last two weeks of June, get them into this year's budget. And then in terms of FY '25, we'll have more to talk about in two weeks, two weeks from, one hour from today. Unless there are any questions? Unless there are any questions, that's all I have for you.
Should we send this report?
So I'll start with personnel.
Can I just say one thing? We were very excited about Ennisburg going on to the next level. Richford is too.
Congratulations to both of you. We have two championship games coming up.
Two championship games, that's wonderful.
Wouldn't that be incredible if they both? Be great. Something to celebrate. So I'll start with my personnel report. So under hiring, we have, Patrick Hartnett is going to be filling in as the assistant principal for next year. He is someone who has been a long time administrator in the area. We have not been able to fill that assistant principal position, so we're going to have him help us out for next year. He worked at Hygie, right?
He did work at Hygie.
So Nicholas, how do you say his last name?
Grudev.
Grudev, school counselor for Ennisburg High School, and Sabrina Bolduc for arts. So it asks the board to take action on those hires.
Do you entertain a motion to accept those hires?
I made a motion.
So you made a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
For resignations, you have Ennisburg High School, Brandy Aitman, art teacher. So that's the board to make a motion to approve that resignation.
Do you entertain a motion to approve that resignation?
I made a motion.
So you made a motion? All in favor?
Morgan, do you want me to go over open positions?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay, so at Cold Hollow, we're closer to work-based learning coordinator. It's still technically open, but I think we've got a promising person. Ennisburg Elementary is looking for grade five teacher, is still looking for preschool teacher, preschool parent educator, and an evening custodian, custodian. No openings currently at Ennisburg Middle. Ennisburg High School is looking for a math teacher, math interventionist, an art STEAM tech ed teacher. We are close on a candidate there as well. Head custodian, evening custodian. Richford Elementary is looking for a school counselor and a grade three teacher. Richford Junior Senior High School is looking for middle school English language arts and a parent educator and a B A year technician. So if people are looking for work, we have some positions open that we would love to have candidates for. We have a P E teacher at Richford Junior Senior High School, Jay Farnum, who has had to take some unexpected leave in the last couple of weeks. He's out of leave, so formally requesting that you do four unpaid days for Jay. He, you previously approved unpaid time for him as well, but he did have some things that came up that required him to take more time.
Any discussion on that? Do you entertain a motion?
I made a motion.
Who, and Rachel Wolf? All in favor?
I don't have anything under student at this time, except some awesome pictures. There's so many really cool, fun things that are happening in our schools right now. You know, I know this is a tough, pressure-filled time for lots of people, especially with the added work around budget, but you can't tell it by looking at what's happening with our students. So really proud of all that's happening out there. What I would like to do is ask the board to grant me authority to hire over the summer.
Any discussion on that? Do you entertain a motion?
Motion?
So you made a motion?
Aye.
Aye.
And then what about the SRO contract?
So I was, I can get to that now if you want. Actually, there's two. I was going to put under other, but. So where we left it last time is we were having conversations around what level you were going to reduce the budget, and you had left two things on the table. So you said, let's hold on filling the nurse position, and let's hold on the SRO contracts, both filling Andres and maintaining, maintaining both SRO contracts. So I would like some guidance from the board about what happens if the budget's approved and what happens if the budget is not approved. Because I do need to, I need to let the sheriff's office know something, but I also would like to get some guidance on the nurses. I know we've got some people that are pretty worried about that. So I would like a clear direction about where we're going to go.
Any discussion on the SRO one?
I didn't hear what you said.
On the SRO one, we'll start with that one. Any discussion on that? I think we should go ahead. If the budget passes, go ahead. Fulfill the contract.
Both, the two?
Remove the S.
That's kind of the way we left it, right?
It was, yes. And then on nurse one, I think we should, if the budget passed, then we should fill that deal.
Yes.
You're wanting to know what to do if it doesn't pass?
Well, if it doesn't pass, we're going to have to come back together and have a meeting. So then you'll make decisions about budgets from there.
Okay.
But you're also going to be in a position where the veto session, I mean, they have to be done by then, right?
The veto session is scheduled for the seventeen. And that's anticipated the last few days. I don't know if they will schedule another veto session or if everything will be sort of tied up enough that they will adjourn.
The problem with the nursing ones, if you don't fill it down, then we try to get that back in the future. We may have to get that back in the future.
So my point asking about the veto session is that if this budget is defeated, if budget number three is defeated, if something happens in that veto session where they raise the yield, you're not going to want to cut anything else. You're going to want to go back with the same budget because you're already going to, or. You could actually go back with a higher to get you to the dollar because my biggest fear is that we cut too much. And they're going to, we're going to prove it. Not that I don't want to approve it, because I would love to see us getting approved budget. But my biggest fear is that we've already cut too much, and that yield's going to fluctuate too much. And so we'll have a conversation, we'll know more, I mean, after this June twenty-fifth budget vote. But I just need to know if everything passes what you want me to do. If it doesn't pass, you're going to be at the table with me as we talk through.
If it passes, go ahead.
So fill nurse and both SRO. Okay. Thank you. So my portion of the legislative update this month is going to be to introduce Morgan, who's going to give my legislative update.
So, and the session is still moving a little bit, but there are a few bills that we've been following, and we'll just update you on them. There was a move to put in a pause to PCB testing that ultimately got killed in the Senate. And so we have started moving forward with the testing phase, the air testing phase at Richford High School. And Ennisburg High School will be on the docket a little while after that. Unfortunately, they've not put any money anywhere to help mitigate the costs. And we know that the money they allocated last year is drying up pretty quickly. So it's unlikely that, unless they come back next year with the pocket of money, it's unlikely that those costs are going anywhere other than, you know, local budgets. There is a construction, there's a lot of discussion around school construction. The session ended with another committee to study it. No new money has been put on the table, but they have loosened the requirements for bidding out construction projects that I expect will help us out a little bit. It's not a huge win, but it's at least not going in the wrong direction. There's also a bill passed, the so-called Bosse's Bill, which is modeled after the way that New York State and other states do some coordinated services. So this would, as I understand it, would give us the ability to, say, partner with Maple Run and NVSD and create an entity that sort of sits above all three of our SUs. That could then go out and, you know, maybe it would be to provide transportation for all the kids. We would then be paying this entity rather than bidding it out individually. There are parts of the state in the south that I think are looking at creating those alternative programs that we've done here in Ennisburg, trying to do that on a more regional level. We will be required to discuss it at an SU meeting. You're not required to take any action. And there's an application process where you have to come up with a plan and present it to the skateboard, and they have to approve it. At this point, I don't anticipate that we're going to recommend you do anything with that, but it is out there. We will look over it as we have time. The last bill, as we tipped, that we're paying attention to is the yield bill, which was passed by not quite the veto-proof majority in the House and Senate, and has been vetoed by the governor. It's unclear to me whether they have the votes in the legislature to override it. I suspect that they'll try and it will be closed, but we probably won't know until the middle of next week. It's, we've talked about different versions of this in the past. The version that was ultimately passed added two new taxes, which are in there to basically reduce property taxes. So one was removing the cloud tax exemption from sales tax. So when they put the sales tax in place, they exempted things like online software sales and things like that. And they proposed taking that exemption away with some restrictions. That raises a chunk of money that doesn't have to be raised on the home step property tax. There's also a one-year Airbnb surcharge. So those folks who are renting out room rentals, who are not kind of part of that rooms and meals tax environment that hotels are and B and Bs are in, that also raised a chunk of money, which was used to reduce property taxes. There was also an increase to the income sensitivity payment. It was a one-year increase, I think recognizing that property tax bills in general were going to be higher this year. And those income sensitivity payments always lag behind a year based on last year's income and the last year's property tax bill. So they were trying to give people who pay based on income a little bit of a bump for this year only. That, of course, costs money, so including that drives up property taxes on the poll for everyone. Created a new position at the A O E that's kind of desperately needed, someone to manage financial data. As I discussed earlier, it brings back that old ballot language saying whether your per pupil spending is going up or down based on the prior year. It will publish the per pupil spending for everyone in that December first letter we get. So that's the chart that we put up there showing us at the bottom of the state. That information's now going to be pushed out in a much more public way by the state. It also returns the excess spending provision wherein probably about the 20 highest-spending districts in the state have an even higher tax rate and are basically contributing more to the state ed fund because of that spending above a certain percentage over the average. I think it ended up at 118%, so statewide average. If you're more than 18% above that, the amount above that, you get double taxed on. It will be a very strange world if we are ever, ever, ever in the position where we need to care about that. Two study committees were created. One lasts about a year and a half, Commission on the Future of Public Education, and is looking at some changes to how we're funding education. And I think there was a push at least to have a look at what we're requiring of public education as well. There's also a longer-term committee, the Ed Fund Advisor Committee, that is really looking specifically at the education fund. What things are we putting in there that maybe shouldn't be in there? How much of a reserve do we need to keep that stable from year to year? And then finally, with all of that, all those moving parts, it set the final yield rate, which was at ninety-eight, ninety-something. So a little bit lower than what we presented to the voters when we warned the budget. And a little bit lower than the draft that was being floated at that time. As Lynn had tipped earlier, if the veto is not overridden, it's unlikely that that yield number is going to go down because the governor and an election year is going to want to, you know, to say that he reduced property taxes. So a lot going on. It may all be moved, although we can, week and a half, but I'm having to try to answer any questions on that.
So I have the F N S U Continuous Improvement Plan adoption. So you should have had a link to the Continuous Improvement Plan that I've sent to you, I think in the body of your board email. And this is something that we have to do through the Agency of Education, is we need to have a plan. So any investments that we have through our consolidated federal grants have to meet one of the goals that's written into our Continuous Improvement Plan. So we have to be able to identify, you know, why we've chosen certain goals and how we're working towards those goals. And there's a connection to school-wide plans. Each of the leaders are currently working on their individual school-wide plan. Similarly, their school-wide plans have to address their school-specific goals and any investments that they're putting towards meeting those school-specific goals. So theirs are not linked in there for you because they are not actually due until the end of June. The only one that needs approval through the process is this one, the S U one. We need that approved before we can submit to get our consolidated grant funding from the state.
Any questions on that? Do you entertain a motion?
I made a motion.
So you made a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And that's all I have? Oh, wait, no, there is one thing. As soon as you said it, I saw my circle on here. One thing that we need your feedback on is, you know, we're prepping for this next budget vote. We've got a communication plan that we've laid out. We've been getting all of our information out that we had planned for, reminders that go out to families, community, front porch forum. One thing that we're, none of us have the, we don't have the same recollection about what the board told us about a mailer. So. Do we want a mailer or do we not want a mailer? So here's the tricky part about the mailer. When we were revoting and it was all of our towns, we do, we did all of the zip codes, right? So when, if, we could do a mailer, but there are going to be a lot of people that get the mailer that are not Ennisburg and Richford residents because of the way those zip codes work. So we just need feedback from the board.
What's the average possible?
That was for all, six of our towns. Well, we did do those two zips.
We were doing the two zips, but they, it's not just the postage they charge. They will charge for how many copies we need, we may.
We used a printer last time. They actually got a better rate for mailing it than what we were getting by doing it ourselves. Do you think that the mails are the reason why we had more people going the first time around? Or you think people were just done by the time the second kid got the mail?
We didn't mail it the first time.
Right, yeah.
Well, it's tummy-dick, so.
I think we have more engagement this third time around. You did not make someone sitting at the end of the table sad. I just wanted to make sure that the board was weighing in on what that decision was. And now, that was the last, that was what you were going to remind me of. Now officially done.
Anything else, then?
No.
Uh, it's all informational.
That, that happened?
She, um, let me pull it up. If you could go to the next person.
Insurance.
It says informational.
They have a pretty cool senior rank. What was it? They, they brought it, sort of a.
They, they brought it, sort of a cutting zoo.
Love that.
Maybe they learned that because of the dairy program that we have.
Do we know what the score of the game was?
It was six, no, six seven?
No.
I can tell you because I was texting her. Five, six.
Oh, it was six, five.
Is that, yeah. Us, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it was ten, three here.
Yep. That's awesome.
So then they both replaced.
It's, um, yeah, either Saturday, somebody mentioned Friday, but I think it was Saturday. Now I can ask them, what play next, right?
Friday is Richford's graduation, so I hope Ennisburg plays Friday.
Yeah.
That's kind of what we were hoping to, and we're also hoping it doesn't go to the following week when we have graduates coming up. It might go to Monday. We hope not.
They play on Sunday, that's, that's true.
Do they? That's still after graduation.
They have to be done before the end of school, don't they, or no? They can go after?
There's a lot of different.
I mean, their schools are out already.
Very cool. Yes, yes.
Jen?
Um, all informational, but I do want to thank the, um, he's invited, um, our grades, different grade levels over to Cold Hollow and it's just been a tremendous experience as, um, Chelsea and Amy talked about. Um, and the, the kids are just so excited to, um, get to see the program and what, um, they could potentially do in the future. So I really appreciate that, me.
I have a funny story for you, me, too. My daughter went over and checked out the tech center. She's really excited. She's not coming freshman. She's very excited to experience that and do that. She is. Yep, she'll be a freshman next year. Um, I ended up with a flat tire on Sunday and I'll have you know she got out of that car. She's like, I know how to do this because I went over to the automotive program. So she really, really was very excited to change my tire.
Is that what they taught?
She's like, I changed it, she was so excited. She had changed a tire, so she actually did it.
She'll show them a doctor. Your life skills.
No, she's not doing automotive. She's doing business, but that's what she wants to.
Uh, it's all informational. One little anecdote, um, we took kids to the Holocaust Museum in Montreal, Ennisburg and Richford High Schools. It's actually the first real field trip I went on. I finally feel I can get away and go on a field trip. And it, not only was the museum really moving, um, but there was also an anecdote about one of our kids, uh, one of our students, he's a 10th grader. And he said that until two weeks before the biggest city he'd ever been to was St. Albans. And then that last weekend he had gone to Plattsburgh, which then became the biggest city he'd ever been to. And then he went to Montreal, which definitely the biggest. He had never been to Burlington. And so it just reminds me of the importance of when we're planning about experiences for our kids and field trips for our kids, you know? And I, I know enough about his background to know they surely don't have money for such things ordinarily, as is the case with many of our kids. So providing them with opportunities like that, it's, it's neat to watch them have that experience.
It's awesome. Thanks for sharing that.
Yeah.
That's good. Anything else? Uh, yeah, we've had a lot, I mean, we've had a very busy month. Um, we had eighth graders, which I wanted to commend, um, the, that's not here, but Matt. Best group of eighth graders. I mean, we could have, normally I like them in and out. We could have kept these guys there all day. They were amazing and they were engaged and they were asking questions. FFA has that state off, that officer team, local team has been killing it. They invited, um, all the fourth graders from all of Franklin Northeast over throughout the day on Friday and had ag days. That went well and that same team won first place in the junior day float, um, competition. They've just been doing, that's a really great team, so. And then tomorrow is our last day with our seniors because of senior trips and practices. So our senior barbecue's tomorrow afternoon. So if anybody wants to come over and have a burger or dogs, there's some salads. You're more than welcome to just stop in. That's our informal way of saying goodbye for the formality of the weekend. Anybody else? More business? Our next meeting is actually informational meeting next Tuesday. I encourage everybody to go if you can. It helps. Then Richford, yes. It really helps have more focus.
Can we just confirm who is coming to each graduation? I just wanna make sure we're still, you're in Richford?
Ennisburg. I mean, I'm just wondering. No. If you're good. Nope, I'm good. I can be there. What, uh, I just, what, what to expect? I've never.
I think the way we had it set up last year, you.
That's not happening.
What'd you say?
Ten minute speech.
I think you shook there.
Great, now I can do it. Awesome. I don't even know if I pulled that.
I think you did. I think.
I think you shook hands.
I think it was you, Lynn, and I hitting diplomas. I think that's where we go. So.
Okay.
Just shake hands.
Shake hands, I can do that.
Yeah. End of speech, like music.
Yeah.
There was that, one of the years. Well, actually, we're allowed to shake hands either. We had to wash the seats after each person left.
Rachel tried to be a quarter of eleven.
Huh?
Quarter of eleven.
That I can do. I can walk right there.
Anything else, anybody? Any more motions to adjourn?
Motion, yeah.
I wanna keep going.
Did it pass? Didn't pass?
Yeah.